Welcome to the Maui Pono Network 2024 candidate interviews that we've been doing for really the last month and a half. And we'll be continuing as we go through a lot of our candidates that we have throughout the county. Today, we have James Forrest, who is with us. Welcome, James. Nice to have you with us. And we'll be, he's running for the Waileku seat for a county council. And with me is Lucy Ann Denae. And Pecathy, and also Bruce Douglas. So, welcome, James. Wonderful to have you with us. And again, you know, we've connected on several occasions, and it's really nice to have someone who's been involved with the county as much as you have in the past. And I thought that it'd be nice to start off by you giving our audience an overview of really your, your past experience working with our county, and also even before that, before you came over to Maui, your, your experience that you've had.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, my name is James Forrest. A lot of people call me Forrest around here. I wanted to start by really, you know, talking about how I came to Maui and how I started working with the Maui County Council. I was a corporation counsel on Kauai, and I was just really waiting for my dream opportunity to join the Maui County Council. And that's where you guys come in. And when the Vana candidates won the majority, I saw a great opportunity to join a team of progressives that were going to be able to make some real change. So, I put in my application, I, I got, I got the, the job interview, and I was just overwhelmed by all the support. And then for the next three years, I was working with a progressive majority in Maui County and, and for a, a guy from Texas, working in environmental law in Maui County was really a dream come true. I did prepare a couple of visual aids to help me through this. And again, my name is Forrest. So you see the run Forrest run. I got a lot of support from people like you guys that were looking for an alternative to the incumbent. And I'm, I'm a different kind of guy. I have 20 years' experience as an attorney, and most of that is in public service. I think when you look at my resume, you're going to see that I have a unique skill set that's going to help the county council, help the, the public get what they need out of local leadership. If you, if you look down this list, you can see I worked at the Texas Attorney General's Office with public records and open government. And I think that's, you know, one of the things that is lacking in Hawaii and politics. I worked also with the Texas Ethics Commission where I prosecuted, prosecuted politicians, and I served at the Workforce Commission fighting for workers' rights. Now, when I did move over to Hawaii, I first started out at the House of Representatives. And I was working for the Judiciary Committee, and I was primarily working on election laws, campaign finance reform. That's something I'm really passionate about, and I think that's something that resonates with local elections here, since so much money has been pouring into our elections over the last couple of years. Now, my most recent work has been with the Maui County Council, where I've worked with the progressive candidates and everyone to pass some meaningful legislation, including environmental laws, progressive housing laws with Gabe Johnson, and some cultural, cultural significant laws with Shane Sinensey. So, you know, overall, I've been working my whole life in public policy. I've been working with government reform. And that all started with my, my degrees in college, which were for social justice and for law. And so, you know, with that, I bring, you know, the ability to help people actually pass meaningful laws in our county that can have immediate impact on all the issues that we're facing today. That's, that somewhat sums that up. I'm, if you don't mind, I wouldn't mind transitioning to some of my goals and what I want to accomplish.
We will in a minute, but I just, I just have just a follow-up question. In terms of legislation, over a four-year period, we passed 19 charter amendments. And I guess from your perspective, when you look at the way the county council was supposed to enact some of these charter amendments, our law, our constitution, and yet, some of them haven't been going through. So what, what's your perspective in terms of the county council adhering to the law and to our charter?
Well, I think that's been a problem for several years now. And, you know, I was there with you. You were on the Charter Commission. I was the attorney from the council, the council services. So I watched all those meetings, and I, I saw your fight, and I know that you did a great job. And, and you know, the people voted on certain amendments to the charter, and some of those amendments, even though they passed, they haven't actually gotten enacted or support from the current administration or the council. I, I just easily say that that's wrong, and that's part of the reason why I'm running for office, is to hold the, the current office holders accountable to the people. One of the, the interesting laws that was passed previously was term limits. And, you know, the county people came out en masse, overwhelming majority voted for 10-year term limits for council members. And my opponent's been in office for 16 years. It just, it just shows that some of the people are out of touch with the, the actual people and what they're, they're wanting to do, and they're, they might be serving the needs of corporate interest and other, other interests other than the people.
Great. Thank, thank you for that, James. And, and with that, we're going to go to your goals at some point in time. Don't worry, we're going to, we're going to get back to that. But let's go to Lucy Ann next, okay?
Hello, Paul, and thank you, Forrest. I, I like calling you Forrest. It's, it's a nice sounding name. You know, your district is noted for the abundance of its streams and waters. In fact, your district, the Waileku, Waikapu, Wahee district, supplies about 75% of the county system with drinking water. There's been a lot of discussion, in fact, you see a lot of buzz on social media, that the A 50-year-old policy of using the water from Nava'eha for new luxury growth in South Maui really needs to be examined and perhaps discontinued. If you were on the console, being an attorney, have, have you familiarized yourself at all with the, the laws around transferring water from one Ahupahu'a or Moku to another? And if there is, if there's a way that we might want to reexamine this policy for the, the higher-end developments?
Right, thank you for that. I do think that the law allows it, is on its base. Now, when you look at the, the water rights that are guaranteed in the constitution and the requirement that they be used for public good, could definitely argue that, you know, providing water for luxury developments is not in the public good when recent affordable housing developments were determined not to have sufficient water for them to proceed. Now, I am very much against wasting water at hotels and wasting water at luxury houses. Now, what I would be focusing on more than regulating their water is just regulating them out of existence. I believe that we need to have a vacant property tax. A lot of communities that face, you know, second, third homeownership with affordable housing crises have done the same. I think that our, our income tax rates and ultimately, the, the general idea is that we need to use all the powers of our county government to help our county people. And that's going to include our property tax. So I would support having a vacant property tax, and a vacant property tax really focuses on properties that are not either lived in for six months a year or not rented out for six months a year. And we have so many of those around our community and our islands. You can walk around these communities, and it's like walking around a ghost town. The only thing that's different is it's a really nice ghost town with green grass and water pools and everything you could imagine. There's just nobody there. So, in Wailea right now, we have two or three new developments that are proposed, which is just so hard to believe and such a slap in the face to our local people that are just, you know, trying to get by. What we have done is we've created a tax system so where a land developer and maybe a, an investment broker will tell their client that, you know, Hawaii has the lowest property taxes. Out of Hawaii, the county with the lowest property taxes, Maui. Now, combine that with huge investment potential, because our scarcity of our housing, the scarcity of our resources, all that, you're going to have a great investment. So if you go to a, a realtor and say, hey, where should I invest in a second or third home? It's almost their duty to tell you, Maui, I want to make it so where that is the worst place to invest in a second home. I think that that will stop future development, and then the vacant property tax will cause people to actually sell the homes or ideally put them on the market for rent. And I, I bring that back to your question, which is water usage. And it's, it's not that we don't have the water, it's that we're using our water for corporate profit. And most of that corporate profit goes off, off island.
Well, thank you. I see you have a, a number of things that you would want to see happen there, reservoirs for storage, pump storage, hydropower, raise rates for hotels and vacant property, prohibit water features for hotels and vacant property. So you, you would be thinking about if you were elected, how this kind of legislation could pass and, and introduce bills to, to do this type of work?
Yes, exactly. And I, I think I meant to start off this conversation with you by mentioning my, some of my responses to the civil beat questionnaire, particularly the one on water. And, you know, I'm going to use the resources around me, the people in this meeting, the, the people of the community that have shown up over the years. But my answer to their water question, which was edited out, was WWLDD, which was what would Lucy Ann DNA do? So my water questions, I know who to go to for water questions, and I'm wise enough to listen to.
I am not the only one, but you know, there, there are many folks with traditional knowledge that I listen to, and I hope you would listen to them too. Because your number one point there, protect native Hawaiian water rights and stream flows, you know, Kanakamoli have kuliana rights, which are the superior rights. It's just that the law recognizes that, but practical application really needs to recognize it too.
Yeah, there've been two recent Supreme Court cases in Hawaii that have benefited the local rights of water. And I feel like that's a trend that is going to keep happening. And so I do believe that there's, there's, there's signs that people are going to be, you know, respecting Hawaiian water rights in the future. Unfortunately, you know, since the beginning of the plantation era, the water rights were just, you know, abused, taken away. I, I think that that is, that's definitely, you know, borderline or cultural genocide. I, I take this very seriously, and restoring native Hawaiian water rights is one of my top priorities. And I, I feel that because it will just help solve so many other issues and return our islands to the way that they need to be in a more sustainable agriculture, make more sustainable economy. It all begins with restoring native Hawaiian rights, and, and that's imperative to restore their, their land and water rights.
Well, hello. Well, I'm going to pass you on to our next interviewer.
Bruce, that's you. You're on mute, buddy.
One of the signs a real legislator isn't just someone who sits backs and, and passes, listens to meetings and passes laws, but actually initiates laws and puts them into effect and researches and writes them. And that's something your incumbent has failed significantly at. I guess this dovetails into your goals, which is very great to see you have goals for your first year in office. Can you share with me and the audience what your goals are and what you would really like to put your energy to put forth and champion in the next term election?
Yeah, and my goals are a little separate from my, the, the legislation that I would pass, but they're the cornerstone of why I'm here and what I've been working on for my entire life. You know, in Texas, that was relating to more South American indigenous rights. Our, our brothers and sister in Mexico that we grew up with, protecting their culture and their dignity. And now, it's just, one of the, the big reasons why I came to Hawaii was to help Hawaiian natives. And, and I truly believe that it's, it's reached the level of cultural genocide. And I don't think many people can win an argument that it has not. And now, the good thing is, is that we have strong leaders today, and we, we have a path forward. And part of the legislation, it might be tough, it might get some legal challenges, but I believe that it's, it's the righteous thing to do. Now, my second goal, which is somewhat tied into that same area of thought, is ending the patriarchy. Women's rights and women's healthcare, part of, part of our modern battles for civil rights has resurfaced. And women's rights are under attack now, like they were previously. I think it goes way beyond healthcare and the right to choice. I believe that we do need to support women businesses, women farmers, family workers. We need to do things like have 3K services so that our women can seek careers across the board. As a society, we need to do better, and we need to make up for past wrongs against women. And I think that we are on a, we're in a wonderful community in Maui County that supports that. And we have powers within our, our county government that can help in, in some ways, even though a lot of these things are federal and state laws, there are things that we can do. Now, another really big point that I, I talk about all the time is that tourism and our hotels aren't inherently bad. I might sometimes, sometimes say they're not inherently evil. It's the marginalization of the workers. It's the use of our resources for their profits. And when their profits are more important than our local society. So, workers, to me, come first, and workers' wages are a huge way to sort of counterbalance profits. And you'll see that we, we definitely are lacking a strong middle class, even though we have a lot of middle-class typical jobs. It's just that our cost of living is so high, and our wages haven't caught up with them. And so I, I believe it's a moral obligation of our hotel industry to pay workers more. And I, I have a couple of interesting ideas related to that that I can talk about later. Obviously, next, and, and at the forethought of all of our, our, our thoughts and our prayers are for the Lahaina people. And we've all been affected by that. We all know someone who's lost a life, someone who's lost a house. What we need to do is just restore their dignity. And a part of that is tied into all of these changes that I'm, I'm recommending here, and to make things right for Lahaina. And, you know, I was at the Capitol most of the session, and I saw that the leaders from the Lahaina Strong Movement and just every other citizen showed up. And they united together, make recommendations after talking to the local people. They had so many local meetings, local gatherings, local barbecues, local dinners, and they all have these ideas. Now, just like our Maui Island Plan, just like our Affordable Housing Comprehensive Plan, none of those plans will be enacted if we don't have new leadership. The leadership has ignored our community and our local plans for the last 10, 20 years. And at this point, it, it just can't happen again, and it can't happen to the recovery of Lahaina. Part of that slides into the next point, which is housing as a human right. And I'm a strong believer of this. I fought with Gabe Johnson and Housing Committee to pass some laws that would help locals. That's, that's one of the things that I'm good at. We got, we were trying to pass a law for a, the local requirement to be on the affordable housing list. And we have opposing, opposition from other attorneys and the administration just saying that it's going to cause lawsuits, and it's not possible. So what I did is I went on and researched as much as I can, because I have to find a way to help the local people get a, a leg up in this battle. So I found a jurisdiction that had a local preference and not a requirement. And that preference was enacted in, in our Maui County code, and that preference gives, you know, basically creates a, you know, seniority list of locals who will be in, at the head of the line whenever affordable housing comes in. And, and that battle would have been lost without people like Gabe Johnson and myself standing up for the local people. And, and that law proudly has been now proposed in Honolulu County as well. I think a lot of you guys know me as an environmental attorney. Currently, I am general counsel for Pacific Biodiesel, which is a renewable energy company. It's, it's a renewable energy company that's doing things right. We, we help our local economy. We participate in the circular economy. But overall, environmental protection, this is one of those things where moving from Texas, I never thought that I would have to fight so much for the environment when I came to Maui. But I did, and I think that, that battle is an existential battle. I think environmental issues are the, 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 the only existential threat to humanity. I think some of our, our current politicians are trying to make that, give themselves the second reason to be existential threat to our humanity, but the environmental issues are truly important to our, our island communities. And then finally, and, and I did not put these in order, by the way, food security. I know all of you guys are champions of food security. I come from a farming community in West Texas. I've, I've come from a place where all the small farms were taken over by big farms. Local crops were replaced by monocrop, in that case, cotton. We have to do better. And again, we have to use all of the powers of our county government. That includes property tax, water rates, and land use to fight for our food security. So those are the goals, and, you know, later on, I can talk about some of the bills, or I can talk about some of the bills now that I would enact, or I would actually file to accomplish some of these goals.
Great. Bruce, do you have any other comments or any other questions? You're on, you're on mute, Bruce.
I would dovetail into what, what bills, with your goals, what bills briefly, to add to the few last questions, would you enact in your first year in office that you would champion and work on?
Right. So, this one relates to wages. And I found this picture from the 60s. And we've been fighting the same issue of fair labor wages, fair labor rights forever against the luxury hotels. And as you see from, from my headline I have up there, record-high wages, not record-high profits. What I would want to do is establish a living wage zone for hotel areas. It's definitely within our rights to establish a higher minimum wage in our county and also in different districts. There are many jurisdictions that have, have done so in the past. And it works well. It would work great here. This is one of those things where one solution might not work for the whole islands. You know, what's, what's different from Waileku and Kehe is that, you know, they have such a hotel industry there. In the living wage zone, it's definitely supported by our, our local unions. And I really think it goes to the heart of the matter, which is that tourism, people are trying to find a solution to replace tourism. I think that, yes, we do have to develop other industries, but tourism isn't the actual problem. It's the marginalization of our workers. Now, if you see underneath here, I got this, this little economic nutrition guide from Fogo Island Inn. That Fogo Island Inn is, it's basically a nonprofit hotel. It's a luxury hotel. It costs about $2,000 a night to stay there. We could require our, our businesses that are hotels to report annual economic nutrition reports. As you see on here, they're going to have to show how much of the, the profits or how much of the income goes to labor, how much of it goes to surplus, which is actually called income. And on the bottom, you'll see how much of it stays on island and how much of it goes to either to the mainland or offshore. These are two ideas that hopefully we will absorb in higher wages, and then it also just enable our hotels to do the right thing. And I do think there's, there's certain peer pressure in, in the social media age that can come in an actual thunderstorm. I mean, we've seen what social media can do. And, and once people see where their money is going, they will actually use their dollar to support local people and their local economy. You guys have any questions or thoughts about these?
Your, your picture isn't from the 1960s because the hotel didn't exist until 1990. But it's a good picture.
Well, the, the, you know, maybe, maybe there was a different one. It had a tag with it said the 1960s, so.
Well, this says 20, this is says 2003 in, in the sign. So I think that would date it.
I gotcha. Yeah, see, you can't trust everything you read on the internet for sure.
No, 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 no. Yeah.
We, we'll continue with questions as we go along, and we have Anne, who will be next, and then Asia will also ask some questions. But you certainly have put out a lot of very interesting information and perspective, and also give a good perspective of where you're going with this. I want to remind everyone also that all of our citizens can vote for, in Maui County can vote for each of the county council members. So you're, you can vote for all nine of the county council members during the, during the election period.
No matter where you live.
And James is not running, is, is, is not going to be in the primary. He's going to be in the general election. Okay, so let's, let's continue on. Anne, next.
Um, thank you. So I just learned that this thousand-unit apartment complex by Paul Tsing, who I guess I read where he has a criminal history. They gave, the council gave him the green light, and it was shovel-ready, this whole development in Lahaina that, that was seemed to be the solution to housing the Lahaina fire victims. And then the water department came and said, this is cannot, this is impossible. We don't have the water. I was thinking, how does that happen that way? Before you would think that that would, they would know that in advance, you know? So what, what are your thoughts about that?
I, I just think it just shows the, the management of our water resources. And the, the fact that our affordable housing is second to luxury development and to hotel water use. We have plenty of water here if we use it wisely. One thing that I, I propose to do is to, to raise the water rates for hotels. Again, this is the strategy of using all of our powers at the county to help us win these battles. Also, eliminate water features. That's been on the, that's been sort of brought up several times, and, and you know, these, the hotels are very, very good at convincing some of our council members that they need all these fountains and water features to, to actually turn a profit or to attract visitors. I definitely disagree with that. And I, you know, I think that the vacant properties also is, is a very good example of how we're wasting water. And to answer your question, it's just, there's several things I honestly consider low-hanging fruit that we can change immediately to provide water for our provide water for our affordable housing projects. Now, what, what I was also looking at, um, and I haven't gone too much into this is, you know, under our county code, we also have the right to declare a water emergency. Um, there's several stages that we could declare. I think that whenever you have a housing shortage and your housing project is threatened because you don't have water, that is a water emergency. Um, and again, those kind of powers are inherent in our county government, either in the legislative branch or the administrative branch. And it's just implacency, it's lack of maybe imagination or, you know, creativity on on how to solve these problems. Um, and if we are naive enough to think that people who have been violating our water rights forever will somehow change and do what's right, we're gonna be in for a hurt for the rest of our, your time here. Um, so I think that the answers are that we just need to use our water. Uh, we need to follow the public trust doctrine, and we need to to use that to actually make strong decisions. Um, I I would not approve any luxury home or second home development. What's really astonishing about the developments that are in Waialoa is they come out and tell you that these are for second homeowners. They're not even hiding. Um, and that shows you the, the system that we're, we're in. And I think that, you know, behind all of this is a lot of money, a lot of greed. And if you look at campaign finance, for example, which, again, I've I've spent a lot of my time working against, you know, uh, corporate financing of elections. Um, I know that there are certain things that are actually legal, but does that make them moral? I do not think so. Uh, I think it's time for our citizens to demand better from our politicians. I think that people who take money from the Hiltons, the Waialoa Golf Course, for example, uh, I think that they need to be held accountable and, uh, you know, ultimately voted out of office.
Yeah, I was pretty shocked to learn that in, in uh, West Maui, only thirty-four percent of all housing there is resident housing, the rest are TBRs and second homes. And, um, but how did it come to that? And I know it's a global phenomenon in resort areas where housing is such a dire, uh, shortage that uh, they are phasing out short-term rentals, Airbnb, VRBO, um, around the world, you know? Um, so what is your belief about that? Is that phasing these out? Can we get a balance to provide more housing?
With what? You know, unfortunately, this, this issue has been growing and growing unchecked in our communities. And it's really hard to erase fifty years of bad policy in one bill like the mayor's trying to do. Um, I went to the, the recent hearing uh, at the county building and I saw people pour out their souls on both sides, honestly. Um, I, I know that if I could snap a finger, you know, and make it happen, then yes, I would, I would, uh, probably, you know, obviously not have done any of that in the past to allow uh, such a thing to happen. Uh, part of that was ignoring the island plan on our, our tourist statistics. Um, I do think that right now, especially for the west side, the short-term rentals are probably the most practical solution for, uh, providing immediate housing. And, you know, I listened to the mayor and probably the best thing he said in his whole term was that he has a tough decision to make. And on one side, it is people who have invested money who who might have something to lose. On the ever, on the other side, it's people who've lost everything already. Um, and he has a fundamental duty to provide housing. So I do think, okay, so after li- listening to those arguments, some of the, the people said, well, you know, if you, if you make this into the apartment district, a- again, people will just sell those units and they'll become second and third houses again, uh, for people who don't live here. Not if we have a whole package like I suggest related to the vacant property tax. If we have the property tax rate so high, we will make it so where it's just not feasible for anyone to buy those properties if they don't intend to either live in them or to rent them out long-term. Um, and again, water rates, these, these units, there's everything that we can use in our power to keep from that happening is what we need to do. Um, and I, I think this actual solution is going to evolve. Um, I do believe that, you know, the Kihei uh, economic community there has, uh, you sort of united. And they've really put out a pretty strong argument for why their community can't be stripped of the short-term rentals right now without doing even more harm. And that's the last thing we want to do. Uh, I do think that there are solutions. Um, when you see that the majority of the short-term rentals are owned by people who don't live here, um, you lose a lot of your sympathy for that. Then you have all the workers that depend on it. Um, so I do think it's, it's a, a situation that we need to phase out over time. Um, but I do think we need to be more urgent on the west side. So if anything, creating, you know, hotel zones or focusing on those apartment districts that are in the uh, in the west side and provide that housing. Because one thing, if you listen to locals the most from Lahaina, they want to stay on the west side.
Is it possible for those seven hundred and sixty? Well, I think I'll, thank you very much.
Okay. So, so, uh, we have Asia next, uh, and and we're, and this might be our last round of of questions right here. So, Asia?
Hi, thanks for all your answers so far. Uh, I would like to know how you plan to shift in gears just a little bit. But how do you plan to stay connected with your constituents, with the people that you're serving and that you're representing in the county council? What are some of the ideas that you have specifically? And what have you experienced so far now that you're running with, uh, communicating with people in your district?
Thank you for that question. Yes, you know, I'm definitely a people person. I like to get out. Um, I am not someone who will just, you know, if elected, be a council member that shows up for council meetings. Um, I, I believe in public service. Um, al- also, it's just uh, being in a community of like-minded people uh, on Maui that protect the environment, that stand up for each other, that, that help out people who need a hand. Um, it's just part of the way I was raised, um, and, you know, being in this small community, it's not hard to see uh, how you need to out, you know, reach out to people. Um, and not, you know, hide in your, uh, gated community or, or, you know, and just take things from a, you know, educational or, you know, non-personal touch. It's, it's the people out in our public are just at this point, you know, crying for help. Uh, you know, our homeless people, um, our mentally ill people, our, our older abuna, you know, it's, it's just about that personal touch. It means so much more than uh, what we're, we're even talking about today or anything. And, um, it's just the way that I've lived my life and, uh, I built my community around that I will be engaged, I will be out in the streets, I will be at the community meetings, and I'll be out with the farmers. Um, and, you know, that's that's one of the things I look forward to the most, actually.
Any other follow-up to that, Asia? Nope?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Well, uh, James, you certainly covered a lot of ground and gave a lot of great insight as to what you would do if being in office and certainly addressed a lot of key issues. Is there any other last statement that you'd like to make that maybe you haven't touched on that you'd, uh, like to communicate?
I guess I have one more slide for you. Food security. You know, I was working at the Capitol um, several years ago when some of the water leases came up. And I saw this parade of native Hawaiians. I saw the celebration that it's sort of like the end of an era was coming. And the, you know, the plantate- plantation mentality was gone. Um, they were gonna have the rights to, you know, determine land use and water use on their own, restore the streams or store their farms. And when the vote came at the House of Representatives, the lease was extended. There were people crying on the floor. Um, you know, I was there and just shocked to see those water rights, uh, given away again. It's a tragedy, and those are the things that motivate me the most. Uh, you know, and now we're here and Maui Pono has one of the best pieces of lands, the water rights, and it's, it's a for-profit corporation. Okay, it's it sounds a little bit positive when you, when it's, when you, it's a retirement fund, I believe that owns it. But when you're talking about our most precious resources of our food security, of our, our farmland and our water, it just seems so wrong that that so much of it is built to maximize profit and that that profit doesn't stay here. Um, and again, I, I wouldn't be proposing such drastic measures if it wasn't called for and if I, if I didn't think that, you know, it was justified. You know, they, I, I do believe that even our, our powers of eminent domain need to be used. Uh, our property tax rule, rules and our water rate rules. Um, now, ultimately, you know, at the bottom here, you'll see a social media campaign, which I I truly believe in the power of social media and, and its influence on corporations. Sometimes, you know, that if you look into their, in their plans and their corporate policies, they'll, they'll have these issues about sustainability and, you know, doing right for human rights and stuff like that. They just aren't living up to it. Um, any way that we can win this battle is on the table for me. Um, and I would put ownership of our farmland either in the county control or on nonprofit control. And I know that there are plenty of nonprofit farmers out there. Um, even a local company where the profits stayed local. Um, and I don't see a way forward for our island whenever so much of our profits are taken off island and so much of our human rights, which is our housing, our water and our food are in this profit industry. Uh, it's, it's, it's a formula for disaster and, and we're living in it right now. Uh, and, and really, I, I think a lot of people have a lot of ideas. I'm open to anything that can put the ownership of this land back into, uh, better hands.
James, uh, thank you so much for that. And, uh, again, your thoroughness and the depth of explanation that you've gone into in terms of what you've been doing and and also what you would propose, I think is really enlightening for a lot of us. So, thank you so much, James. Uh, and again, uh, James is running for the Waialuku County Council seat. Uh, and all of our citizens here in Maui County can vote for all nine county council members. So again, please go out and vote. If you haven't registered yet, please do so soon. Uh, the actual mail-in ballots will be coming up fairly shortly, the end of July. So again, we're right in the middle of this whole election season, so please be an informed voter. Thank you for watching. And again, make sure that your vote then is a conscious one where you're electing the people that you really feel can represent our, our community and our Ina. Mahalo for watching. Thank you, James.
Thank you.